The council meeting of April 17th, 2007 is called to order and the clerk will call the roll.
Palm, Palm President Radomski. Radomski excuse Rosas. Rosas President Sanborn. Samer President Skidmore. Skidmore President Thomas. Thomas President Van Roy. Van Roy excuse Reverir. Reverir absent Weber. Weber President Benford. Benford President Brandon. Brandon President Brewer. Brewer President Canare. Canare President Compton. Compton President Golden. Golden President Gruber. Gruber President King. King President Knox. Knox President Conklin. Conklin President Olson. Olson President Quorum.
Quorum is present. Before we get started this afternoon, I think, given the tragedies in Virginia of yesterday, I think it would be appropriate to rise for a moment of silence in memory of the victims. Thank you. Alder King.
Thank you, Mr. Slavich. I've moved to suspend rules 2.04, 2.05, 2.24, and 2.25 for those items so designated on the agenda for both the noon and the 6:30 PM meetings.
All right. Moved and seconded, objection seen none, those rules are suspended. Alder Compton buzzed in accidentally? Okay, all right. First order of business is swaying the mayor.
Yes. Okay, if you would raise your right hand for me and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Dave Chislovich.
Do affirm.
Do affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
The Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Charter of the City of Madison.
And the Charter of the City of Madison.
And will perform the duties of mayor.
And will perform the duties of mayor.
In and for the City of Madison.
In and for the City of Madison.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I so affirm.
I so affirm.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Well, I just have a few brief remarks that I would like to make. My first promise in my second term is to get that microphone fixed. We will work closely with the county. If we can combine health departments, we can get the two microphones to work here in the city council chambers. First of all, let me say that while I respect our state constitution and the right of the majority to amend it, I cannot in good conscience take office without noting my strong opposition to the recent amendment that so blatantly discriminates against my fellow Wisconsinites who are gay or lesbian. Nonetheless, now I'm always warning you, no demonstrations. Nonetheless, I respect the process that brought about what I consider to be the wrong result. And I believe the same process will be used soon to not only reverse that amendment, but to go further, to give all of us exactly the same right to marry, to raise a family, and to be full members of our communities. I will work hard to convince a majority of Wisconsinites that history is moving in that direction. I also want to acknowledge that almost half of the current council is moving on, and I want to take this opportunity to thank you for your service to our community and to wish you well in your future endeavors. I should also note that some of you will find that your new copious free time is now filled by requests from me for continued service on many committees. Every time you think you're out, you get pulled back in. I don't want to go into detail, and so many alders are leaving, and it's dangerous to do this, but I do just want to acknowledge a couple alders by name. Alder Golden, of course, has been a member of this council for 18 years, I think, and has, I think, earned the right to be one of the council deans and a very respected member, and we will miss his good judgment. But he is one of those alders who will find his time taken up by many committee assignments. I also want to acknowledge Alder Olson, who I think, I don't want to embarrass her, but she is frankly one of the most decent people I have met in politics or out of it, and I will definitely miss her. And lastly, Alder King, who has been nothing but a problem for me since, but who is also one of the smartest and most principled and most effective people I have ever met inside or outside of politics, and he has a very bright future, and I'm sure we will see more of Alder King. And to all the other alders, who I didn't have a chance to mention, I want to also express my gratitude for your service and express how much I enjoyed working with you and wish you well in your futures. Since I have a chance at this moment to address not only the current council on the floor, but the new council waiting in the wings, I did want to take a moment to try to bridge the current council's work with the new council's work. In the last four years, we planted a great number of seeds, and our job in the coming years is to make sure that those seeds grow into healthy trees. So quickly, in the area of public safety, this council joined me in building the first new fire station in 25 years and added the first new ambulance in 15 years, but the next council needs to build yet another fire station in 2008, add a third ladder company, and perhaps an eighth ambulance over the course of the next four years. We overcame longstanding obstacles to launch a cooperative agreement to share paramedic services, but now we should go further and begin discussions on a regional fire and rescue service with our surrounding municipalities. We added over two dozen new police officers, but the new council needs to continue to increase the police force, but we also have to do it with the guidance of the new police staffing study that moves us away from population-based formulas and towards outcome-based goals for reducing crime. We worked for the establishment of a new state and federal program to assist us with the cost of adding new police officers. In the area of economic development and neighborhoods, this council has reorganized the planning and development department into the new Department of Planning and Economic and Community Development to make it more responsive and better equipped to help our economy. But the new council needs to finish the job by creating a new Office of Neighborhood Services, increasing coordination between the Office of Community Services and the Community Development Block Grant Office, and considering a change to that structure if necessary, writing a new economic development plan, and rewriting our zoning code to make it simpler, more reflective of our comprehensive plan, and more supportive of infill and new urbanist development. This council took a bold step in purchasing a fifth of the housing on Allied Drive. We also assisted in the development of the new Boys and Girls Club and started a new apprenticeship program to get Allied residents into the building trades. We're starting to see results, but the new council needs to complete the job, and one of the first tasks that you'll face, the new council, will be to approve a redevelopment proposal for the city-owned properties. In improving Allied Drive, however, we don't want to simply relocate its problems. This council helped me create the Emerging Neighborhoods Fund, and the new council needs to work with me to use it in other efforts to make sure that such concentrations of poverty are not recreated in other parts of our city. This council improved the city's tax incremental financing policy, but the next council needs to deal directly with a fundamental question about TIP. It's my belief that the pump for downtown housing has been primed sufficiently using TIP, and it's time to let the market work and to refocus TIP primarily on job creation and the building of basic urban infrastructure. Inclusionary zoning is workforce housing, and we should continue to monitor it so that it works and so that it can be renewed when the subset comes up during this council period. In the area of social justice, we created the Department of Civil Rights. Now it's time to see what it can do. In addition to its ongoing work, the DCR should take on two major issues. First, the disproportionate number of minorities in confinement at both the adult and juvenile level. And second, the creation of more businesses and employment opportunities for people of color inside and outside of city government. This council supported the new Atwood, Wexford, and East Madison neighborhood centers, and the new council and I need to make sure that those projects are seen to completion. But in regard to the overall posture of the city, I believe strongly that we need to continue the spirit of last fall when business and progressive leaders came together on the issues of economic development, childcare, and public transportation. We've demonstrated that we can work together, and in the next term, it's my goal to demonstrate to everyone that a city can be, have a thriving economy, not in spite of, but because of, its progressive policies. We can be both progressive and pro-business. In the area of schools, I've often expressed my support for neighborhood schools and will continue to urge the school board to resist closing schools. We'll continue to fight for reform at the state level where the revenue caps are strangling public schools all across the state, and we'll continue to fund the Crossing Guard Program, which amounts to a half million dollars in city support for public schools. In addition, just as we reinvigorated the Economic Development Commission four years ago, I'll propose a new, more powerful city-school district liaison effort that will also involve the business community and the county. I'll also propose building upon Madison's summer enrichment programs for 2008 by combining Fit City Madison activities with academic programs. In the area of civic projects, this council and I had the good fortune to be in office when Erwin and Bob Goodman decided to help us realize a 60-year civic dream for a municipal swimming pool. It's my hope that other generous Madisonians will help the next council and I add a second pool on the north side. This council approved two new branch libraries, and it's my hope that in the next four years we'll be able to break ground on a badly needed central library. This council made a bold move in purchasing the Villager Mall. Now the new council and I have the exciting responsibility to preside over its redevelopment, which must include the strengthening of the Harambe partnership that was the primary reason for the investment in the first place. We created a study committee to evaluate the future of the historic Garver Feedmill. The new council and I will decide its future, which I hope will have an exciting reuse. We created a committee to move us forward on Central Park by setting realistic goals and assigning responsibilities for action. We should move forward on that project. We made great strides in continuing to revitalize the downtown. As part of that effort, it's time to put the Midstate Street parking ramp in mothballs and focus instead on better marketing the ample parking we already have. In the area of transportation, we created four committees to plan for our future: Transport 2020, the Streetcar Committee, the Committee on the Future of the Metro Bus Service, and the Platinum Biking Committee. By early next year, we should have a broad consensus on a comprehensive plan to move forward in a coordinated way with some or all of those projects. Later this week, I'll travel to Chicago with Milwaukee Mayor Tom Barrett to ask a federal committee to support a high-speed rail link between Madison and Milwaukee. I believe that we'll see funding put in place for high-speed rail in Madison within the next four years. We need to continue to build and rebuild our streets. We'll finish the State Street and East Washington Avenue projects started in the last four years, and we need to continue the trend of improved pavement ratings on all of our streets. In the area of the environment, the council and I increased the intensive street sweeping program in the last four years, which is the most effective means of cleaning our lakes, and the new council needs to continue to expand that program. This council approved the Green Capital City Plan and a new unit of building maintenance and sustainability. With these tools in place, the new council and I can make Madison a national leader in sustainable management and in the reduction of greenhouse gases. The council approved historic infill projects like Hilldale, Vinvale Commons, and Monroe Commons, but if we are a slow sprawl, we have to continue the trend toward greater height and density in many parts of our city. I proposed a 10-point plan for the improvement of the water utility. That plan is moving forward, but the new council and I need to remain vigilant so that the momentum continues in the right direction. In the area of good fiscal management, we've established Madison measures to link budget decisions to actual on-the-ground results, the TRIM program to encourage and reward efficiencies, and the natural step to incorporate green thinking and efficiency into all our operations. In the next four years, we need to have these philosophies take root so that they're just part of how the city does business day-to-day. In the last four years, we've kept tax increases to the second lowest of at least three decades. In the next four years, we need to strive for similar success, but not at the expense of quality services, and we should never succumb to the temptation to adopt one-size-fits-all formulas, either locally or imposed by the state. Finally, a word about elections themselves. I'm becoming more concerned about the rapidly increasing cost of local campaigns and the effect this could have on the ability of average citizens to participate as candidates. This council wisely asked me to appoint a task force to explore a public financing system for city elections. I've asked respected University of Wisconsin political science professor Ken Mayer to chair this task force, and Professor Mayer has agreed to do so. I'll ask the task force to produce a system both around voluntary citizen contributions, not general tax funds. The new council may have the opportunity to act on the task force's report and to make Madison one of the first cities in the nation to adopt a public financing system for local campaigns. It's my belief that if we do these things, then Madison will accomplish something that has not been done much anywhere in America. We'll successfully meet the challenge of growth. We'll embrace growth as a positive that makes our culture more vibrant, our economy stronger, and our city a more interesting place to live. We'll be known to ourselves and to the world as the healthiest city in America and a city worthy of the name, home. Thank you very much.
Alder King. Actually, no. Let's not make that Alder Reverir. Move adoption. All right. This is commending Alder Person Austin King for his service as council president. Whereas Alder Person King was elected by his peers to the office of President of the Madison Common Council in April 2006, and whereas Alder Person King met weekly with the mayor and council president pro temp to discuss city issues, and whereas during his terms as council president, Alder Person King served as Chair of the Common Council Organizational Committee and served on the Board of Estimates Housing Committee, Joint Southeast Campus Committee, Landlord and Tenant Issue Subcommittee, Public Safety Review Board, and the Region Street South Campus Planning Steering Committee. And whereas Alder King also created and served on the President's Work Group on Council Web Page Redesign, sponsored meetings and briefings on the 2007 budget, and several on the planning and development reorganization. And whereas Alder King, in addition to the above duties, represented the 8th District with great responsiveness to his constituents' concerns, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the common council commend and thank Alder Person Austin King for his conscientious service during his tenure as President of the Madison City Council. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Thanks, everyone. I've got a longer speech for the four years, but on the year, I just wanted to take this opportunity to correct this grotesque misconception of what the council presidency is and does. The last few weeks have seen an increase in outside pressure related to this very tribal thing that we do. I remember Alder Golden described it this way. This is something we do internally. We select a leader, point the CCOC, it's more work than it is power by a factor of 10. And I commend anyone who steps up to try to do it. Two years ago, I lost a lopsided vote for council president, and last year I won by one vote. And in either case, the world would have gone on and not much changed. And so I guess the one thing I wanted to say about the last year is, one thing I learned is that this isn't the most important thing in the world, and I just want to say, I hope we can keep this as a tribal institution, as a thing we do internally, and resist outside pressure to try to influence who we select as our own leadership. So that was the one thing I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Alder King. Move adoption of item two.
To adopt item two, commending Alder Person Judy Olson. Whereas Alder Person Olson was elected on April 4th, 1995 to represent the 6th District, and whereas Alder Person Olson served on the Alcohol License Review Committee, East Washington Design Oversight Committee, Board of Estimates, and I'm not going to read all these, Judy, because we'd be here for a while. And whereas Alder Person Olson served as Common Council President for the 1999-2000 term, and whereas Alder Olson is most proud of working on the completion of several neighborhood plans which helped guide development in the 6th District, chairing the Living Wage Task Force which resulted in the passage of the city's living wage ordinance, assisting in the completion of the city's climate protection plan, and sponsoring the city's stationary noise ordinance. And whereas Alder Olson, through her hard work and dedication to her aldermanic duties, has faithfully and with honor served her constituents and the city of Madison, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the common council commend and thank Alder Person Judy Olson for her dedicated service for her constituents and the city of Madison, and wish her well in her future endeavors. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
I think I can get through this, and if I start to break up, you can help me a lot by rolling your eyes, talking among yourselves, getting up, moving around, reading the newspaper, whatever. I would appreciate it a lot. I have been here a while, and there are a lot of people that I need to thank, and many of them are not in the room today. I'm going to try to just identify the people who I see in the room who have helped so much with especially District 6 projects. District 6 has gone through a lot of development in the last 12 years. It's really been, as my predecessor warned me, it would be a tsunami of development, and it has been. But I think it's mostly gone well, and the reason is that primarily planning staff, but not only planning staff, helped with the development of plans. We worked with neighborhood residents and neighborhood associations who really stepped up to the task and became leaders and really very sophisticated in the area of development and planning. And I really want to thank a few people in the staff that I see here in the room who helped with those plans as we rebuilt the older part of the city, both from a private development standpoint and from just the redevelopment of infrastructure, which has been going on apace for the last bunch of years, not to everyone's liking, I may say, but we have to do it. So thank you, too. I see Larry Nelson first. The Ahara River Plan was exactly the first thing that I did. We finished this meeting, and I went to lunch with the new council, and at 3 o'clock, we had a meeting, the Ahara River Parkway Plan. We organized that meeting 12 years ago, this week, and today, almost today, the Ahara River Bridge is done, the Parkway is being built, the bike path is being constructed. It's really one of the most elegant public works projects and very important to everyone on both sides of the Isthmus. So I want to thank you, Larry Nelson, for all of your help, you and your staff, with that project. I see David Dennick-Chakrav, who has had a few challenges lately, but I want to say when you first came on, you had a challenge that no one seems to have remembered, and that was the difficult decision of how we dealt with the lead pipes situation, and you inherited that from someone who had apparently just not paid much attention to it. You inherited it at a time when you had very few choices, and you came up with a proposal to help work with neighbors and the city to get the lead pipes converted to copper pipes. We're almost done with that project. Thank you for all your good work on that. I don't see Mark Olinger. I want to thank him, though, for all of the work he's done on plans for the Willie Street build, the Shink Atwood Neighborhood Business District, the Gateway Build, which is still a work in progress, and the East Rail Corridor Plan. And I don't see Mike Widlick either, but he wrote a beautiful plan, that East Rail Corridor Plan. If you have a chance, if you're looking for an example of a good planning document, that's it. Pull it out and read it. It's actually good reading even beyond what it is as a planning document. So many other people, our staff are wonderful, they have carried the ball for us in our many projects, and work hard and are dedicated to the city, and I just want to thank you all. I know I've forgotten some of you. Team Brasser, thanks for all your many explanations of budgetary matters. I appreciate them very much. Jim Morgan, the Parks Department has worked very well with District 6 and will continue to do so. The Ahara River Parkway Plan was certainly a park project as much as it was a planning project, and I very much appreciate that work and the work that is to come in the Garver Feedmill area and the Central Park. So thanks to you and your staff. To the council, I will miss you. I mean that. I really don't want to single people out here, but I have to say that I've especially enjoyed working with Alder Reverir, who's my classmate and the last remaining member of the proud class of '95, and to so many others of you who I've worked with. Austin, I have very much appreciated watching you grow over the last four years. I wasn't quite sure when you made some wisecracks about old people that we were going to get along, but we have. And so thanks for being such a stimulating member of the city council. Done a good job. And to all of the rest of you, thanks so much. To the mayor, congratulations on your second term. I really like the fact that you have pushed the envelope on some things. The Streetcar Committee, which I'm on and will continue to be on for a while, is something that I think has definitely stimulated a conversation here in the city hall and in the community at large. It's not always been real positive conversation, but it is discussion, and we need to have it, and I really hope that we will continue to experiment, push the envelope, talk about things that need to be talked about, whether it's planting, not mowing, our medians, very controversial thing, but it resulted in some discussion, we learned some things from it, and I hope we will continue to do that. I think city government can do those things. I think it's very important. And finally, Lisa and Debbie. Debbie over there. I don't know how you do it, but I have to thank you for all of your help, and you were thorough, on time, professional, accurate, and very helpful, and helped me to look good, and I appreciate it very much. I will probably call you up a few times when I can't find my calendar and my computer parts, my jacket. Maybe they'll be down here someplace. And Lisa, I want to just mention one thing. The name of that last committee?
Oh.
It's the Urban Water File Management Committee. And I'm really glad you put it on there. And to the new council members, congratulations. I'm really looking forward to seeing what happens in District 6 in particular. I expect great things from Marcia, and very, very happy to be leaving District 6 in such good hands. Thank you all. I wish you the best.
I was going to say, you may want to leave that for other alders. Let's go to Alder Reverir again for this one.
Move adoption of item number three.
Item three commends Alder King for his dedicated service as an alder. Whereas Alder Austin King was elected on April 1st, 2003 to represent the 8th District, and whereas Alder King served on the Community Common Council Organizational Committee, Community Development Block Grant Commission, and many other committees, and whereas Alder Person King served as Common Council President for the 2006-2007 term, and whereas Alder King is most proud of working on the passage to raise the city's minimum wage, repealing the city's cabaret license, the Justice for Patty resolution, the tenants' right to repair and deduct ordinance, and introducing the Healthy Families/Healthy City ordinance. And whereas Alder King, through his hard work and dedication to his aldermanic duties, has faithfully and with honor served his constituents and the city of Madison, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the common council commend and thank Alder Person Austin King for his dedicated service to his constituents and the city of Madison, and wish him well in all his future endeavors. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Alder, favor sign if I was saying aye.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, colleagues. I jotted down some notes, so I wouldn't lose my way. This has been a fun four years for me. It was something of an accident that I even ended up here. I think Alder Golden and Brewer will remember me as the long-haired kid on campus who used to show up lobbying rhetorical bombs about the loitering ordinance, housing policy. And I was all geared up in December of 2002. I was going to be the campaign manager for Todd Gerald's reelection, which, of course, he aborted. And ended up going out to med school and is doing very well in San Francisco. Bids you all adieu. My slogan in that first campaign was "Active Accessible Representation." And I've earned a lot of critics over the years, but I don't think one of them can take away the work I've done just delivering on a basic premise, which doesn't always get met, that an Alder should show up and do things as much as he or she can every day. And I really tried to do that. I made some crazy promises during the campaign. I told people I was going to raise the minimum wage at the city level. A lot of people laughed. I told people I was going to liberalize all the dancing laws and cited Footloose the movie a little bit on the campaign trail. I promised a new requirement that would require affordable housing and new development. And people didn't think that was going to happen. People didn't think this guy was going to get elected. And we ended up doing some good things in the last four years. I'm really proud of the work we've done. The very first resolution I authored was in May of 2003. And it took Chancellor Wiley to task for a decision he had made to charge international students a segregated fee of $125 a year to pay for their own surveillance. Now, this is what a lot of our critics call foreign policy. It had really nothing to do with city business. And the only odd thing that happened this time was that Chancellor Wiley showed up. Now, I love Chancellor Wiley. He's a great guy. We've got a good relationship. But he showed up, and he wagged his finger at us and said we had no business weighing in. And we did anyway. I think it got 12 votes. I remember former Alder Bellman voted for it even. And the next morning, it was on the front page of both daily newspapers and of the campus newspapers. And it wasn't by 4:00 that afternoon that Chancellor Wiley had announced that he was rescinding his decision to go ahead with the $125 fee and pay for it out of the general fund. I only mention that because I think sometimes the things that we do that aren't potholes get dismissed. But $125 a pop for thousands of my constituents was the real deal. And as much as it might be foreign policy, it matters, and it matters to people. The international students that showed up that day had a forum that they could never have had otherwise. And they had this naïve and beautiful belief in government that I want to nourish. And you know what? We made a difference that day, and I guess I got hooked. We ended up, I think, doing some really wonderful things. The minimum wage campaign was certainly something I'll never forget. We made a little bit of history. And I did it as a rookie. I remember Mayor T. Slevin's comment that it somehow shouldn't have happened because I was still in my first term, and no rookie deserves a big win. You certainly had yours in your first four years, and you've done a great job. And the coalitions we built around that campaign were really important. And I think, to some degree, carry through to today. We had a really active council, that first council. We passed the phosphorus ban. We cracked down on 24-hour payday lenders. We passed some of the strongest protections in the entire country for people who are not documented. Inclusionary zoning. We funded that Affordable Housing Trust Fund a little bit, which was my crack about old people. I said, "I hope we can capitalize this fund by the time I'm in the market for housing." Or by the time I'm as old as some of my colleagues. Regret that comment, Alder Olson. And so, I've woken up every day for the last four years and tried to do something. And obviously, a lot of people aren't real happy about that. You may have noticed the Wisconsin State Journal and some other right-wing media have been taking me to task on an almost weekly basis for the last few months. And I think it's been revealing some of what they've said and some of what they haven't said. In one of their seven or eight editorial celebrations of my decision not to seek reelection, the State Journal wrote that the proposed Paid Sick Days ordinance would have affected, quote, "next to nobody." Now, we can argue about the merits. But I think that was an incredibly revealing phrase. There would have been 35,000 people, almost all of them really poor, that worked in the city of Madison that would have been affected by that ordinance. And whether you supported it or not, no one on this council made that mistake of dismissing tens of thousands of our constituents with a phrase like "next to nobody." I know the State Journal's editorial board's full of country car Republicans who probably don't think about these things very often. But I think it's an obligation we all share to bring light to those of our constituents who often don't get a fair shake. And I hope we did that even in that failed campaign for Paid Sick Leave. I want to talk about two people in particular that really defined for me my term of service. And they're both poor. They're both part of that 35,000. I think in any other city, in any other week, circumstances would have been different, and they would have been part of "next to nobody." But they did some really remarkable things, and I was blessed to get to know them. The first was Patty. The things that she fought through to get justice were things that no human being should have to do. And last week, I was at the Wisconsin Coalition Against Sexual Assaults Award Ceremony, where she and bill leaders were given their Voices of Courage Award. And I thought, "God, what an underwhelming award, Voices of Courage." Patty was poor. She couldn't afford good legal representation. She was still in debt seven years later. Some people made light of the $35,000 that was in that resolution. That was huge for somebody without much income, for somebody who relies on state-sponsored employment. And this council did the right thing. And we talked about issues that don't often get talked about. I'm really proud of the work we did on that. The other person whose name I needed to mention tonight was Tina Campbell. I don't know if all of you remember her. It was, I think, in late 2004 that we debated a resolution called the Justice for Janitors Resolution, in which we called on cleaning contractors to respect the rights of their workers to organize. And there was a woman who came. Her name was Tina Campbell. Made $7.50 an hour, no benefits, no sick days, no health insurance. And she came and testified about a resolution that was pure foreign policy in every sense of the... Had nothing to do with city business. And she poured her heart out to us. She talked about how difficult it was to raise her son, Marcus, on $7.00 an hour. She talked about the difficulty she's had at work, not having rights on the job. And this council backed her up. That's really what happened when we passed that resolution. And we didn't just do that. I don't know if everyone remembers this. I don't know if he told anyone, but former Alder Holtzman actually took up a collection plate in the back of the council chambers and ran out in the hallway and caught Tina, gave her like $100 bucks, and said, "Take your kid out to Chuck E. Cheese." And she did. And I can tell you that that day, there was nobody in the city that believed in the city as much as Tina Campbell. And sometimes, those resolutions that we pass give people hope. We lost Tina, and we lost a lot when we lost her. But ultimately, what it comes down to for me, the lesson, is that we gave her some charity that night, and that was important for her. But much more important than charity is justice. And I've got a few hundred bucks left in my campaign account. I'm emptying it out into Marcus Fudge, her son's college fund. I would much rather give her a Paid Sick Days ordinance. I'd much rather deliver something of substance. My charity will only go so far. And that's true of all of us. We need to remember people in our community that often get forgotten. And so, I can't do that anymore. That's up to all of you, folks who'll be joining the suss to your body. And I hope you do it. We have an amazing city. We have some of the best staff you could imagine, people who are brilliant, who make half of what they would in the private sector because they believe in public service. We've got a council staff that will do the best work to make us look really good. We have every opportunity to make a difference in people's lives. And our challenge must be to take advantage of that opportunity. Because if we don't, we're not doing right by our constituents. So, as a general rule, I think we do need to think bigger. The architect that designed Chicago's famous downtown loop unveiled it to the public by saying, "Let us make no small plans." And certainly, they weren't when they were talking about downtown Chicago. I think we ought to bring a little bit of that same ingenuity and courage to tackling the real problems that we face in Madison. We are an economically prosperous community unlike any other in the Midwest, and we've got poverty, real, dire poverty. And we've got the brain power to fix it. I'm 25 years old, and a lot of people my age like to think that we can change the world. I'm still one of them. And I've often said that I think my generation really believes that we can end poverty. We really do. But we're only going to do it by acting. And we're only going to do it by at least acknowledging the people that often go unacknowledged, people like Patty, people like Tina Campbell. When we do right by them as a city, we're doing right by the world. And I hope we continue to do that. Thank you very much.
For a motion on number four, let's go to Alder Brewer.
Move adoption.
Alder Brewer moves adoption, commending Alder Person Ken Golden for his service. Whereas Alder Person Ken Golden was elected on April 4th, 1989, to represent the 10th District. And whereas Alder Golden served on the ADA Subcommittee to the Transit and Parking Commission, the Transportation and Planning Commission, the Board of Estimates, the Planning Commission, and many other committees. And whereas Alder Person Ken Golden was appointed as the city's ambassador to Pluto on March 27, 2007. I got to read these things before I start reading. And whereas Alder Person Golden is most proud of working on the passage of the city's Big Box Ordinance, developing bus pass programs and ways to increase Madison metro ridership, developing strategies to address infill growth, securing paratransit funding from the state, and working on the city's traffic calming program. And whereas he has immensely enjoyed working with the 10th District neighborhoods and facilitating neighborhood meetings on the Edgewood College Development, the Monroe Commons, and Grocery Store Project, and all things traffic. And whereas Alder Ken Golden, through his hard work and dedication to his Aldermanic duties, has faithfully and with honor served his constituents in the city of Madison. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the common council commend and thank Alder Person Ken Golden for his dedicated service to his constituents and the city of Madison, and wish him well in his future endeavors. All those in favor, signify if you say aye.
I think I served for 18 years because I didn't want to be here at this moment. I've watched this ceremony a number of times, and one thing is different. We used to talk about each other after the awards were given. And we're not doing that this year. We're just talking ourselves. And this guy, I want to say something to you, Governor King. You are so encouraging to see that people like you still grow up and become adults and work the way you do. And I have the ultimate respect for you. Okay. I actually had to make a list, and I'll probably do half of it. But I'm going to take a slightly different tack. I don't want to talk about what I've done. I know what I've done, and some of you know what I've done. And really, it's done already. I want to look at the future. I also don't want to sit around commending one staff or another because I generally think that the city staff... Now, bear in mind, I work for the state administering federal funds to counties. So with the exception of the school district, I got it covered. And this staff is uniformly so far above anything I've encountered in any of those other levels that the citizens of Madison should just feel absolutely proud at what we have here. And so I don't want to single anyone out with the exception of Deb and Lisa, who have absolutely, probably been responsible for half of what I've accomplished. They have been so supportive. They have been so... They anticipate. They know when I'm going to miss a lunch meeting, and they call me at 11:45 because they know I've gotten into some business at the state. And how many times did you do that, Lisa? And how many times did you make it work? And I really appreciate what both of you do. And the tapes are gone, Deb. I'm not giving my tape recorder to Brian. I'm going to keep it in the car, and I'm going to get license plates for the speeders hotline. I looked at some 1989 campaign literature the other night. And there's a lot of things on it. It was one of those newspapers, four-sided. But five issues came out that I was strongly in support of. I wanted to eliminate traffic on Monroe Street. I wanted to stop all peripheral growth. I wanted there to be a green belt around the city. That used to be a big thing. I wanted to totally... I wanted to see a totally privately financed convention center. And I wanted to increase bus service. If I were in baseball, I'd be batting 200, and I'd be sent back down to the minors. And I'm saying that because one of the things I want to do today is I want to talk to the rookies, and of course, the people that will stay on a little bit. Because I want you to realize that everything that you have promised is subject to change. And your quality of service depends on your willingness to change the positions that you have when you find out that they're wrong. I'm not saying which are wrong or if they're wrong. But if they are, be honest enough to say it. I want to talk a little bit about what the rookie's job really is. And one of the things I've emphasized, and I've talked to Tim about this a lot in terms of some of the encounters he's had in his district, that I see the job as being an educator. And I see your job as getting a PhD in every subject that comes before you. And by an educator, I mean that you have to stand in front of your constituents, and you have to stand in front of the public, and you have to give them the information they need to make a good decision. And what you often find is that they come in with the same kind of campaign slogans that I had in 1989. But then, if you're able to show how those positions are incompatible with their own values, you can do a lot in terms of changing people's minds and educating people. I think one of the things that's very important in terms of process is that you never take a position early in an issue. Tim, I think, is the only one left, maybe, Mike, for Arbor House. We were here till 4:00 in the morning, and you know how much I like staying out late, by the way, over a fairly minor land use in my district. But I had taken a position early, and I got the you-know-whats kicked out of me. I think the other thing you need to recognize if you're going to be quality Alders is that at least 80% of what you do is going to be invisible to your constituents. And they will never know that you did a good job at it. But that's the stuff that's important. An example I would cite is some of the work we did in terms of dealing with tax-exempt properties. And I didn't do this work, by the way. Former Alder Person Holtzman gets a lot of credit for part of it. But the Stormwater Utility is another one. I think Larry Nelson had a lot to do with that. Where we were able to figure out ways of securing revenues from tax-exempt properties for services that we were providing. And it benefited our taxpayers. And they didn't know that we did that, most of them. Few did. So be prepared to do that. Sorry, Dave. Don't let the mayor bully you. And he doesn't bully in the sense that he's going to come in and grab you by your whatever and push you around. He will come in, and occasionally, he'll tell you that, gee, we're going to approve something like, let's just say, Verona Road, just as an example. And he won't have talked to you about it in advance. And you're sitting there with 10 years invested in it, and you say, "I would have loved to have a conversation about this beforehand." Don't be afraid to tell him that you didn't care for that way of being treated and that you don't share his point of view. And I'm joking.
Thank you all, Golden, for coming on.
But generalize what I just said. Here, you can keep this one. That was an afterthought. Respect and trust the staff that serve you, and they are critical to your success and your district's success. This is their day job. And this is what... People often derive a lot of their identity from work and family, but work is one of those things. This is their careers, and they are so good at it that you really need to work with them rather than against them. By the same token, if you've done any work in the area of how change occurs, often change... often change comes from the outside. So don't be afraid to float what sounds like a silly idea only to find out that with the proper retooling, it turns out to be a brilliant idea. So work with staff on that, don't work against them. The city, and I think the county, has a real different tradition in terms of how the county board works with staff. They, there seems to be much more of a divide there. And, you know, when I get a constituent call or anything like that, it's usually staff that are going to help me through. And some, we should have a contest. Each one of us talk about our most difficult constituent call, and I guarantee you I'll win that one. Respect the process. When you need to refer something, refer it. There used to be something called aldermaning courtesy. I haven't seen it in the past few years. And I think it'd be a good thing to restore. As long as you're not hurting someone by allowing an alder the time that alder needs, give that alder what they need. Even if there's someone who has driven you nuts. And even if it's someone who you're politically different from. I think the one thing I would hope that the new council's capable of doing is to reduce the level of partisanship that's going on here. And I don't just mean parties now. I, I mean, an issue comes up, there's a five, six phone calls you make, and you don't make the other 13? Think about it yourself, whether you've done that. And new people, think about whether you're going to fall into that trap. And realize that it's very important to call the other people who might have a different point of view. Because that will create a much more collegial body. And don't make it personal. And lastly, family, not lastly, second to lastly, family first. I, I'm very encouraged to see new members of the council who have young children, again. There was a point there where we lost that population. We've had some of it come back, and now we have even more. And I think you need to make the council family-friendly. And coming home at two in the morning and having to go to work the next day is not family-friendly. And I lost that issue. That's one I didn't accomplish. But lastly, have fun. This is Pluto? And Tim, you know me as the bear. I award this today for that. Good luck to all of you.
I, I told Alder Golden that Ambassador to Pluto is a plum assignment, but the commute's just going to kill him, so. Alder King?
Move adoption of item five.
Second.
Second to adopt item five, commending Alder Person Brian Benford. Whereas Alder Person Benford was elected on April 1st, 2003 to represent the 12th District. And whereas Alder Person Benford served on the Affirmative Action Commission, Board of Estimates, Warner Park Recreation Center Advisory Board, and many other committees. And whereas Alder Person Benford is most proud of serving those who were underrepresented in the community by shepherding them through City Hall, that he knew his limitations, and that he served his district well as a single low-income father of four during his four-year tenure. And whereas Alder Person Benford, through his hard work and dedication to his aldermanic duties, has faithfully and with honor served his constituents in the city of Madison. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the common council commend and thank Alder Person Brian Benford for his dedicated service to his constituents and the city of Madison, and wish him well in his future endeavors. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Thanks a lot, everybody. Appreciate it. Just want to say a few words. Over the last four years, I haven't said a whole lot. So bear with me if I take a couple minutes today. You know, I was thinking about this the other day, and I, I think maybe I'm just getting cranky in my middle age as I sneak up on 50 years old. That I'm just not the same easygoing guy that I used to be. I used to be able to get along with anybody. I could relate to almost anyone. And I was really blessed to have a tremendous upbringing where I was exposed to a lot of diversity. I often joke, I'm probably the only black guy in town that could dance polka and build a John Deere carburetor at the same time. So trust me, I'm a study in diversity. As I said before, as a kid, I was exposed to many different lifestyles. And growing up in Fort Acuson after leaving the inner city of Milwaukee, I, I learned tremendous lessons. And I have a great deal of respect for humanity and really love people. Over the last four years, I think I lost a little bit of that. I found myself basically being a changed individual. I, I kind of lost faith in the community, and I lost a little bit of faith in myself. I know that I'm a really lucky man. I'm extremely blessed. I have four beautiful kids, just incredible children. I have a very loving and supportive family. I have tremendous friends. I have a lot of role models in the community, some that are sitting in this body. So I, I know that I'm really blessed. And I often remind myself of that every day when I'm walking around and I see what I perceive to be injustices in the city. Daily, I walk our, our great city. I, I love walking and biking. And as I'm walking past these cranes and a lot of the new high-rise condos, I, I'm troubled because I'm seeing homeless people sleeping in our doorsteps. I'm seeing homeless people sleeping in our over $60,000 bus shelters. And, and I just can't shake that. As I bike along our scenic trails, I, I see pocket mansions. I see really nice homes. I see well-tended gardens. And then I get to Allied Drive where there I see desperate conditions that some people might disagree with me, but I would say they're on par with New Orleans, Chicago, and any other urban area. And maybe on a smaller scale, but the human impact is still the same. When I walk down King Street after I leave meetings here, I see 20-something-year-olds sipping $10 martinis while people are walking to the blood bank to give plasma just to buy groceries. A lot of you know that I work at the Neighborhood House Community Center. I hand out emergency food rations while outside of our doors, just a few blocks from Camp Rando, there's thousands of rabid Badger fans pumping millions of dollars in the game day rituals. And here I'm giving out meager bags of food. As a community, we struggle to find money to support our schools. We struggle to find money to support preventative programs. We struggle to find money for childcare and affordable housing and healthcare. All the while this is going on, gangs and crime and the assidious nature that destroys a lot of human lives are happening without regards to cost. As I look back on my four years of service, I often think back during the budget times. And I was so frustrated that as a community, we couldn't see by putting money in preventative, in preventative programs, in the end run, we save people from getting locked up, especially people of color. Especially here in Dane County where we tend to lock up more people of color than most places throughout the United States. As a community, I wonder why we couldn't see the desperate people that I serve every day. I just couldn't understand it, especially as policymakers. We've received a lot of accolades, the best city to walk. We're fifth city. Maybe I'm joking, but we're probably one of the top 10 places to eat cheese in the United States. And as we look at our accolades, I see people going out to trendy restaurants and spending money while thousands go to bed hungry and without hope. Now, as a politician, I should have played more of a role in raising the level of awareness to the need of a lot of these folks. I did my best, but I have to apologize right now that I took a lot of this personal. I just couldn't understand why, why people on this collective body didn't see the world as I seen it. And I made it personal. And I said some things over the last four years that I regret saying. You have to understand that being one of the few men of color that served on this body, I didn't want to be that angry black guy pounding on my seat back there and screaming. Because I know that's not the way to get things done. But I was extremely disturbed, and I made it personal. And I said some things, and I regret, and I apologize openly in public for the things that I've said. I should have took more of a time to connect people. I should have brought that easygoing Brian back and offered a lot of you who maybe didn't see the world the way I seen it to come over and spend an afternoon at the Neighborhood House. But I didn't. And as I look back, I feel that I failed for doing so. It was never about politics for me, folks. And I, I just want to say something related to that. I, I want to commend Alder King. I'm, I'm old enough to be your father. And I can say that when I was 21 and 25, all I cared about were parties, not PD, the Greens, or the Dems. I just cared about parties. Your service along with your buddy Joe Lindstrom has been admirable. And I'll never forget you guys. So when I, I think about me and politics, it wasn't about representing an ideology. It was about what I knew, the things that I seen daily. I often said that we're all products of our reality. And my reality is serving the community, and I can't escape that. So what I want to say to you is that even though my service is coming to an end today, I vow to continue to represent the underrepresented in this town and to provide a voice for people who don't have a voice. And I vow to work even harder to try to connect people. I'm telling you, I miss that easygoing mellow guy, damn middle-aged. In closing, I, I just want to say thanks to Debbie and Lisa. You two have been fantastic. You've helped me so much. And I'll never be able to express it in words. So thank you so much. I want to thank the mayor and his staff. You've been really empowering for me, Mr. Mayor. And certainly appreciate the way that you've listened and taken my comments to heart. And I'll never forget my service with you. I want to thank very competent city staff that you also made my job much easier. And this city is greatly served by your service. So in closing, I want to thank the city of Madison for giving me this opportunity. I'll go away for the rest of my life very proud of my service. And I'm empowered to continue that service even though I'm not an alder. Thank you.
For the next motion, Alder Brewer.
Move adoption.
Seconded to adopt a resolution commending Alder Person Isador Knox. Whereas Alder Person Isador Knox Jr. was elected on April 5th, 2005 to represent the 13th District. And whereas Alder Knox served on the Board of Bayview Foundation, CDA Housing Operations Subcommittee, Common Council Organizational Committee, and many other committees. And whereas Alder Person Knox is most proud of meeting the various needs of all his constituents by promoting minority business development on South Park Street and in South Madison, which included the Gilson Street Project, serving on the Villager Mall Ad Hoc Committee and addressing issues in Penn Park, and also addressing neighborhood concerns regarding basic services such as traffic, noise, and trash. And whereas Alder Person Isador Knox Jr., through his hard work and dedication to his aldermanic duties, has faithfully and with honor served his constituents and the city of Madison. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the common council commend and thank Alder Person Isador Knox Jr. for his dedicated service to his constituents and the city of Madison, and wish him well in all his future endeavors. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
First of all, I just want to let people know how much of a real honor and privilege it is for me to serve my neighborhood, the district, and the city. Someone who's been a civil servant for 20-plus years of my life, I, I do appreciate the opportunity to serve city residents and, and taxpayers, too. I wanted to thank first the many people who supported me in my campaign, who voted for me and supported me through this term. And there's just been so many people that I can thank for lending an ear to me and giving me lots of advice. I really appreciated the opportunity to, to, to serve the constituents in my district. And there's just so many things I can talk about. But it was really the small things that really made the difference for me in my particular neighborhood and in my district. And I can think about the different projects, working with young people on different planning grants. The Village of Mars had a huge impact on the residents in, in, in our district. And I can always appreciate, like the violence neighborhood who, who constantly always reminded me of things that still needed to be done. And I learned so much from those different neighborhoods. What I tried to do, and I appreciate Ken Golden's comments about all the different things you come in with on your list of things to do. I, I tried to make sure that I focused on business development, particularly minority business development, and, and recognize how important that is to our community in terms of, of employment. Even small businesses that maybe hire three or five people, how important that, that makes for this city to be healthy, provide better services to the residents. I know in my particular neighborhood, you know, those services are critical to how people are able to live the life that, the quality life that they need to have. And, and I tried really hard to focus on that. The other thing, though, is I always recognize that, that the city constituents are very diverse. My neighborhood, Alder Palm and I talk a lot about our districts having diversity with liberals and moderates and conservatives. And recognizing that, you know, once you get elected, you really have to represent all of those constituents. And I really tried hard to do that, to look at different perspectives. Sometimes I think that, that, that may not be the, the best thing to do because you don't always please everyone. And I always felt like if I made one decision, then I had half of my district out there, you know, pretty much sending me emails and giving me the business on it. And if I weighed in the other way, you know, similarly, I would, I would hear from them, too. I think one of the things I can take from here, from this, that, that I probably didn't contemplate was, and I'm sure some of the new orders will come in ready to represent their districts and, and the interest that those constituents have. And then you'll find out that you get bombarded with a lot of citywide issues that take up a lot of your time, that you have to focus on. And you, you still may not come out with a yea or a nay. I, I can think about the smoking ban in particular, sick leave, inclusionary zoning issues, the Overture Center, which I'm sure this new council will still be grappling with. And those things do require a lot of your time and energy. Most of my friends, when I decided to run and do this, they, they kind of looked at me like, man, you're one of the busiest people we know. You have to be out of your mind to want to add that to your plate. But I think it was well worth it. I learned so much from that that I can take back as being the average Joe, you know, and try to help my community get better. I want to thank my colleagues very much because I learned so much from the different individuals, your passions, for your point of views. And, and I think I learned so much more listening and then being able to, to, to understand how difficult it is to do what you do. So those of you who are continuing, I have the utmost respect for. And, you know, you can call me anytime if you want a little sanity break or something, you know. I'd certainly be there to listen to you. And the new orders, you know, it's good that you're coming in with a lot of energy and, because you're going to need every ounce of that energy. Trust me on that. You're, you're going to need it all. But I'm sure that you'll, you'll do a good job. I feel good about my district because I know it'll be in good hands. And I just wanted to let the new order know that as many phone calls that I got from her and emails, I will reciprocate that, for sure. When it's talking about my neighborhood. So that, that'll be fine. The staff, the staff, you know, they've equated before. And I'm another one of those people that worked 18 years in the state. I've worked seven years in the county. And, you know, we, we have the best city staff anywhere. And as one of those civil servants myself, I'll tell you, they work very hard. They know, they're very talented. And, and I even like the fact that they, they don't mind sharing their perspective even if they don't agree with you. You know, they'll tell you that, too. And, you know, maybe, Mayor, you can, you know, when I need a reference for a city job, you'll, you won't hold it against me all of my, my time as a... me all of my time as an elected official here. But certainly, we have great, great, great staff, and we should be proud of that. And finally, I have to kind of thank my family, because they made the ultimate sacrifice of allowing me to serve on various committees. And, you know, I'm finally beginning to sink in this week when people kept coming up to me and congratulating me on my retirement, you know. I begin to appreciate what they were saying, because it truly is a very difficult job. But before, I guess what I would leave the council where it is, and people have echoed this, too, is don't forget about the people who may not be represented here. And you're going to have the task of not only looking at your own issues, but representing those individuals in our society who, as several alders mentioned, don't get seen that much, or don't have the opportunity to say what's impacting them. And the one thing I learned is that government can't solve all our communities' problems. They can only assist with them. You know, it's really up to each citizen to develop those infrastructures in the community, get actively involved, and I really had learned to appreciate that. I don't want anybody to feel sorry for me either, because the good thing is I get to go back and focus on those things that I'm passionate about. There are a lot of kids in this city who don't realize the potential that they have. And so I get to put more time back into, you know, the Boys and Girls Club, working with the Southside Raiders Football and Cheerleading Program, and really kind of do those things that I really enjoy. I think education in this city, making sure that kids really know how to navigate that, I really want to put more effort in that. And then, you know, we all have to be a part of helping these young people become citizens, you know. You know, this is a great city, but this city and this county, we have a lot of things that we shouldn't be proud of, you know. The juvenile confinement rates are the highest in the country, some, as well as the adults, too. So you guys got a lot of work cut out for you. I'm certainly, I'm sure I'll be serving on some committees to try to help you with that work. But in order for this city to be what it could be, we have to make sure that we're serving those who are in most need. But I'll be watching you guys on TV, so, you know. And maybe I'll email you a little bit, too. So, thanks a lot.
For a motion on item seven, Alder Brewer.
Move adoption.
Alder Brewer moves adoption for a resolution commending Alder Person Santiago Rosas. On this one, we do have two registrants. I don't know if either of them are here wishing to speak, but Juan Jose Lopez, Juan, are you here?
He just left.
He just left, and Dan Gira, Dan, did you want to speak?
Sure.
Okay. Please join us.
Is there a time limit?
Three minutes, I guess.
I'm very short-winded. I just want to echo actually to thank you, to all the alders that are continuing to serve and the alders that are leaving us. I've had a short and brief experience to work with many of you, and I hope to continue to work with you in the future. I want to take a second to thank Alder Rosas, and I want to thank him for his service to the common council, his service to the Latino community, service to the business community, and the minority business community, his support for the Latino Chamber of Commerce, his support for Centro Espino, his support on the immigrant policy that the Madison Police Department has. I want to thank him for supporting minority candidates for public office. And I want to say that these thank yous are very much echoed by one of my mentors, Peter Muñoz, who couldn't be here today. But lastly, what I want to say, and it's something that Alder Knox brought up, is that this is going to become a body that is no longer going to be diverse. One of the things that you always look at is, in an organization, how healthy it is, is how diverse is your body. And there's going to be twenty people here who are, come from a white persuasion, and one minority, and it's the next two years that we have to deal with these. And what I'm going to ask you is, I'm going to ask you to make sure that we don't forget about those who aren't here and represented. In this case, my concern is the Latino community, but all of our communities. And lastly, I want to thank Alder Rosas, I wish him well, and I hope that he continues to pound away and continues to lead the Latino community. Thank you.
Thank you. Then I will read the resolution. Whereas Alder Person Santiago Rosas was elected on April 6th, 1993, to represent the 17th District, and whereas Alder Person Rosas served on the Alcohol License Review Committee, the Ad-Hoc Committee on Civil Rights Department, the Community Development Block Grant Commission, the Transportation Commission, the Board of Public Works, and many other committees. And whereas Alder Person Rosas served as President Pro Tem for the terms 1998 to 1999, and 2005 to 2006. And whereas Alder Rosas is most proud of his work on defeating a resolution to make English the official city language, having the first roundabout in the city, his work on the issues of cruising, economic development in the 17th District, adding new playground equipment, soccer fields, cricket fields, and dog parks to his district, working on the development of the Sycamore Bike Path, and being a strong and vocal advocate for the Latino community. And whereas Alder Person Santiago Rosas, through his hard work and dedication to his aldermanic duties, has faithfully and with honor served his constituents and the city of Madison. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the common council commend and thank Alder Person Santiago Rosas for his dedicated service to his constituents and the city of Madison, and wish him well in his future endeavors. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I'm standing before you here. I got kind of a bittersweet for me, and I can understand some of the departing council members, how they can get emotional, because, you know, twelve, thirteen, eighteen years is a good chunk of your life here. And for, you know, information service, or should I say for the record, people kept saying, hey, you served twelve years, it's fourteen years. And with all due respect here, or should I say, my colleague here, Mario, he gets, you know, mistaken as Santiago Rosas, and we had a joke between us, saying, when I don't come to the common council meeting, he's here representing 17th District. The other is also Juan Jose Lopez. People say, oh, didn't you serve in the school board? Well, no, I'm not Juan Jose Lopez. Hopefully, people can get that straight when I leave. But I want to thank city staff here, and again, I'm probably repeating everything that the common council members that are departing here have said, but it needs to be said. I started in ninety-three, and I remember one of the city staff, Larry Nelson's, as a matter of fact, said to me, Santiago, you should let city staff work for you. I couldn't understand for the first six months, I was driving myself ragged, back and forth, doing everything. He said, no, 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 let city staff do this for you. He was absolutely correct. Our city staff here in the city of Madison is absolutely wonderful. And they really do make you look good. And they also, you know, you also get some success here, as Ken Goldin said. And Lisa and Deb, I just can't say enough wonderful things of them. I mean, every time I email them, I said, please double-check my spelling, I'm a terrible speller here. And they helped me out through this. So yes, for new alders, you know, take note, because these ladies could able to help you here. It's been really an honor and a privilege here, representing the 17th District. I really appreciate the people that I've worked with. I think for the first six months, I wasn't sure how this thing was going to turn out when I first was elected, and discovered that, you know, you're not working with numbers, as one alder said about a year ago during the budget season, you're working with people. And to me, that was the most important thing. You are working with people. I'm proud to say that the 17th now has had economic development, new jobs, which I'm really proud of. And, you know, I was just talking to Judy Compton here, and Judy, I want to thank you for being a good East Side alder for your assistance and knowing what the East Side is growing and needs, that type of representation. So thank you for that. But also, you know, the cruising, that we had a problem on East Washington Avenue, and the 4.3 economic development that we're putting on the East Side, the red light running that we fought really hard, and I know Ken helped me on that. And it was a good debate, it was a good debate. And, but, and English, as a, you know, the official language here, I felt that was going to be a really negative impact here, not only for the Latino community, but also for the city of Madison. So we won that, and I appreciate that. I want to thank one of my mentors here, and I know that, you know, I'm kind of choosing a couple of alders here, but, you know, Tim Brewer, you know, for your mentorship, I appreciate it. He kept me out of trouble the first year I was here, so I appreciate it. I won't miss my constituents in terms of representation. I won't miss the budget nights, and I'll promise at least I'll watch one night of it. But keep in mind, please, that, you know, we have a growing number of diversity here in the city of Madison. And I think Alder King here has pointed out a number of things here, that we have a diversity growing, and we need to pay attention to it. If you have people of color or not in your district, the point is that we have a growing population, and please, keep that in mind. They cannot speak for themselves. You have to be their voice. And the other I wanted to point out was also the poverty that we've talked about here in our city. L.A. Drive, you know, Truex, you know, Wexford, doesn't matter. The thing is, is if you start working with these folks, I know that Truex in the East Side has been very successful. They've been down in terms of crime, and, you know, police calls, et cetera, because of the neighborhood center they've had out there. And I worked really close with them, and I think that really has helped, not only the district, but also made my job easier. But I want to thank you. I know that I didn't agree with some of the issues that came up, but I do respect everyone's opinion on this. And I, too, will be missing you. So thank you again. Thank you, Mayor.
Move adoption of item eight.
Item eight commends Alder Radomski, and while he isn't here, I think it'd be appropriate to read the resolution in his absence. Whereas Alder Person Noel Radomski was elected on April 5th, 2005, to represent the 19th District. And whereas Alder Person Radomski served on the Greater Madison Convention and Visitors Bureau Board, along with many other committees. And whereas Alder Person Radomski is most proud of improving communications and decision-making processes within the 19th District neighborhood leaders, residents, nonprofit organizations, and businesses, consistently voting to improve Madison Metro and advocating for the regionalization of that bus service, helping to advance a regional approach to economic development, and promoting a balanced investment approach for area tourism through his service on the Greater Madison Convention and Visitors Bureau. And finally, limiting his speaking time during council meetings. And whereas Alder Person Radomski, through his hard work and dedication to his aldermanic duties, has faithfully and with honor served his constituents and the city of Madison. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the common council commend and thank Alder Person Noel Radomski for his dedicated service to his constituents and the city of Madison, and wish him well in his future endeavors. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And a round of applause for Alder Person Radomski. And as always, he was brief.
I would also note, Mr. Mayor, that we were missing Alder Van Roy today, who served with us for six years. We did commend him at our last meeting in March, but we're certainly, our thoughts are with him today.
And a round of applause for Alder Person Radomski. Alder Person King.
Move adoption of item nine.
Seconded to adopt item nine, which is a resolution honoring Alder Cindy Thomas. Whereas Alder Person Cindy Thomas was elected on April 6th, 1999, to represent the 20th District. And whereas Alder Person Thomas served as President Pro Tem for 2003 to 2004. And whereas Alder Person Cindy Thomas served on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Committee, Allied TIF Set Aside Ad-Hoc Committee, and many other committees. And whereas Alder Person Thomas is most proud that her constituents knew her and felt comfortable corresponding with her, and that government was not some faceless bureaucracy because she put a welcoming face to city government, that she worked hard to have her constituents' needs met in City Hall. She provided a strong vocal and principled opposition to what many Madison residents thought were the excesses of the progressive leanings of the mayor and the common council as a whole. We're not missing words here. She never confused her role as an alder with that of a state legislator or member of Congress. She seldom, if ever, proposed or voted for any resolution that didn't relate directly to city business, and she tried to represent her constituents in a professional, respectful manner, both on the council floor and in the community. And whereas Alder Person Cindy Thomas, through her hard work and dedication to her aldermanic duties, has faithfully and with honor served her constituents and the city of Madison. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the common council commend and thank Alder Person Cindy Thomas for her dedicated service to her constituents and the city of Madison, and wish her well in all her future endeavors. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's not long. Look, just in case. I really will try to be brief. Ken and I have been married for forty-three years. Little did I know, when I decided to run on a whim for city council, how much it would change our lives. This job takes over your life. How? Our conversations have been dominated by political discussions. The phone rang early in the morning, during dinner, late at night. Our nightly walks were interrupted by friendly constituents wanting to chat about personal problems or city resolutions. Ken got to be on a first-name basis with many owners and waitstaff at restaurants that he had to frequent because I was at yet another evening meeting. He has been, for forty-three years, my cheerleader and my strength. He's supported my whim for eight years. I couldn't have asked for a better campaign manager, second-in-command, a defender from the journalists and the left-wing detractors. So I want to thank my husband, and all the significant others who stand by quietly as their partner slays dragons and invents a new world. Secondly, I want to thank my constituents. They stuck by me for years. They took me into their lives, and they shared their problems. They treated me like a visiting celebrity. I have become very connected to the people in my neighborhoods. I shared their worries, tried to guide them through the Madison's bureaucracy, like I would a family member, because that's what they've become to me. I thank them for their faith in me. I will miss those connections as they are the heart of the work that I did here.
Move to refer all unfinished business to the organizational meeting of the committee the whole.
Seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, all that business is referred, Alder King.
Move to adjourn, sign a die, so that we can convene the organizational meeting.
Seconded to adjourn, this council sign a die. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's adjourned. Thank you. All right. Okay, since you're not council members yet, we can start with a roll call. We'll just go straight to the first order of business, which is the swearing-in, and the clerk will administer the oath.
Could all stand and raise your right hand for me, please, and repeat after me. I, state your name.
Aye.
Do affirm.
Do affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
The Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Charter of the City of Madison.
And the Charter of the City of Madison.
And will perform the duties of Alder Person.
And will perform the duties of Alder Person.
In and for the city of Madison.
In and for the city of Madison.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I so affirm.
I so affirm.
Congratulations.
Yes, now we can go right into the convenance committee of the whole. The meter will call to do that.
Okay, so let's do this. Alder Rivera, could you make a motion Alder Revere, could you make a motion to appoint, uh, an Alder to, uh, serve as the convenor of the Committee of the Whole? Alder Conkle.
Yeah.
Alder Revere moves.
I move to appoint Alder Person Conkle as a convenor of the Committee of the Whole.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alder Conkle will take the chair.
Alder Revere, I believe you need a motion to convene as the Committee of the Whole.
Correct.
I move that we convene as a Committee of the Whole.
And the clerk will come to the roll. Palm.
President.
Palm present. Farm Remley. Farm Remley present. Rhodes Conway.
Present.
Rhodes Conway present. Rummel.
Present.
Rummel present. Samborn.
Present.
Samer present. Schumacher.
Present.
Schumacher present. Skidmore.
Here.
Skidmore present. Solomon.
Present.
Solomon present. Revere.
Here.
Revere present. Weber.
Here.
Weber present. Clausius.
Present.
Clausius present. Clear.
Present.
Clear present. Canair.
Here.
Canair present. Compton.
Present.
Compton present. Gruber.
Here.
Gruber present. Judge.
Present.
Judge present. Carr.
Here.
Carr present. Conkle.
Here.
Conkle present. We have a quorum. Alder Revere.
Thank you, Alder Person Conkle. I just did wanna make a moment to, uh, mention the supplemental statement with the oath of office. As Mayor Chislevich mentioned at the outset of his address, uh, some of us this afternoon also have on our minds, besides this very joyous occasion, the fact that there is a constitutional amendment that has recently been added to our Wisconsin Constitution. It's, uh, Article thirteen, Section thirteen, and under, uh, Common Council Resolution zero seven, one zero five, we do have the opportunity today, for the first time, to make a supplemental statement with the oath of office. That is a private decision for each of us, and I just wanted to make a note that some of us will be making that supplemental statement, which is, uh, attached to the oath of office form, which each of us will be signing today. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Alder Revere. Um, the first thing that we're gonna do is, we need a motion, or we have a motion to convene into the Committee of the Whole, what we need to do is just agree on what all the rules will be, and essentially, what we'll be doing is, we have two items of business, electing a president and a pro tem. Um, what we'll do is, we'll take motions from the floor, um, as soon as we, and, and ask the person if they accept. If they accept, see if there's any additional motions, have them accept, and then there will actually be a paper ballot. Everybody's name is listed on the paper ballot, as we don't know who it's going to be yet. Tammy will, uh, distribute the ballots, you'll vote, we'll wait for her to, to, um, collect the votes. If it passes, then, um, we'll move on to the second item of business, if not, we will vote again. So, if that's everybody's understanding without objection, that's the way we'll proceed. Right? The, uh, city attorney says that we have not voted to convene the Committee of the Whole, so, there is a motion, if there's any debate, um, if not, we will proceed to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Thank you very much. And so the first item of business is the election of the council president. Are there any motions for nominations? Alder Palm.
I nominate Lauren Canair for council president.
There's a motion and a second. Alder Canair, do you accept?
I accept.
All right. Yeah, Alder Brewer.
I move for consideration nomination, Alder Person Revere.
Second.
And Alder Revere, do you accept?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? All right, so the, the motions are for, um, Alder Canair and Alder Revere. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll proceed to the ballot vote. Lisa has the ballot, she's handing them out, this ballot appears to be white. Yeah, just circle one, one person.
This is in Florida?
And you are not, you are not.
Vote well, vote often.
There is a blank to put your, uh, district number, if you so choose, but you're not required to put the district number on the ballot, if you would not like.
You don't vote.
Thank you. Kumbeh. All right. Y'all look good, by the way.
This is where you need Rocky's theme. Or We Are The World.
Um, the clerk has tabulated the ballots and will announce, oh, the, the vote was eleven for Revere and nine for Canair. So our new council president is, um, Alder Revere. Um, the next item of business is election of a council, um, pro tem. Are there any nominations from the floor? Alder Revere.
I nominate Alder Person Tim Brewer.
There's a motion and a second. Do you accept?
I do accept.
All right, and he has accepted additional motions, Alders, no. Any additional motions?
In that case, uh, I move to cast unanimous ballot for Alder Person Brewer as president pro tem.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. It's unanimous. We have a new council president. What we would do now is, we need to adjourn, as a Committee of the Whole convene as the council, accept our recommendation from the committee, and then we can recess the meeting and go to lunch. So, um, and get our photo taken first, of course. Um, so a motion to adjourn the Committee of the Whole?
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Right, and.
Yes, that's correct. So I will be going over to the luncheon after you guys eat, and I can witness them all at that time.
If you've signed it already, you should run up right now and get it.
Oh, you can run right up. Yep, absolutely.
And people can leave their papers on the.
We do need a motion, um, to convene into the regular council meeting, and we need a chair back, unless the will of the body is that I just continue.
That's fine.
All right. Um, so, we would, um, convene the, the Common Council meeting, and, uh, the clerk has to take the roll again?
Yes, that's correct.
Palm.
Present.
Palm present. Farm Remley.
Present.
Farm Remley present. Rhodes Conway.
Present.
Rhodes Conway present. Rummel. Rummel present. Samborn.
Present.
Samer present. Schumacher.
Present.
Schumacher present. Skidmore.
Here.
Skidmore present. Solomon.
Here.
Solomon present. Revere.
Here.
Revere present. Weber.
Here.
Weber present. Brandon. Brandon present. Brewer.
Present.
Brewer present. Clausius.
Present.
Clausius present. Clear.
Present.
Clear present. Canair.
Canair present.
Compton.
Here.
Compton present. Gruber.
Here.
Gruber present. Judge.
Present.
Judge present. Carr.
Here.
Carr present. Conkle.
Here.
Conkle present. Quorum.
Right, and now we need a motion to accept the report of the Committee of the Whole. There's a move and seconded. Um, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. And now we need a motion to recess the meeting to six-thirty this evening. A second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the meeting is recessed. Thank you.
Everybody can leave their things right here.
Yes, you may.